Good evening and welcome to the combined work session, a regular in-person and virtual school board meeting for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. The first item on the work session agenda is the pledge of allegiance led by the kindergarten center students Eli, Saigon, and Annalise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and truly public with its fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. All right, you take care, bud. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by kindergarten center principal, Ms. Anna Marie Delosi, and assistant principal, Mr. James Galligan, titled Kindergarten Center Global Fair.
Good evening, School Board President Fields, fellow school board members, Dr. McGary, administration, the kindergarten center staff, and community members. My name is Anna Marie Delosi, and beside me is James Galligan. We have the honor and privilege of being the administrators of the Upper Darby Kindergarten Center. As we all know, the early years of education laid a foundation for a child's future success. In the kindergarten center, we have the unique opportunity to instill a love for the learning and foster the development of essential skills that will shape our students' academic and personal journeys. The Upper Darby Kindergarten Center is located in Juxell Hill. We feed into six of the nine district elementary schools. We have six hundred and four students. Two hundred and seventy-six of our students speak English as a second language. We speak over thirty languages at home. We are the first mirror, window, and sliding glass door for the Upper Darby School District students. Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop coined the phrase "windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors" to explain how children see themselves in books. Of course, I had to add something about literacy to this. A window is a resource that offers you a view into someone else's experience. A sliding door allows the reader to enter the story and become a part of the world. And a mirror is a story that reflects your own culture and helps you build your identity. Our vision for the kindergarten center is to create an inclusive and dynamic learning environment where every child feels valued and supported. This is why we created our first global fair.
We always talk about how the kindergarten center, it's so diverse and, you know, we want to be able to celebrate everyone's culture and background. So Anna Marie took a big leap and was like, let's do this global fair.
So the global fair is where kids get to go to each classroom that has like a different country.
Maybe countries that they've never heard of or never learned anything about.
I have Australia, there's Ecuador, there's Brazil, Egypt, Greece. There's all these different countries that the kids get to go visit and learn about.
Anna Marie did send out an email and asked families, you know, where they came from, put a lot of those countries on a list, and then we had to go in and pick what country we wanted to represent. We're like, okay, now we gotta get researched on and figure out how are we decorating this classroom so that it is memorable for the kids coming in each session?
If we started the first day of the global fair in your own classroom?
I say, all right, guys, get line up, get your passport.
They're really excited to use their passports and get to travel to these other countries, even though it's just like the classroom next door.
We were talking about different ideas and someone brought up this passport book.
Our assistant principal, Mr. Galligan, he owns a photo booth. So what we did is we took our kids down, he took their photo.
A lot of them weren't sure what a passport was. When we went down for their pictures, some of them were doing their nice picture like this, some of them were sticking out their tongue or like doing a pose.
There were people there gluing their photo onto a certain passport.
It looked like a pretty official passport with like Upper Darby Kindergarten Center on it.
As soon as they opened it and saw their picture inside, like their excitement, they're like, oh, they wanted to show all their classmates their picture. Each time they go to a different classroom and a different country, they get a stamp in their passport book. So that way they know what countries they visited. I think it's a wonderful touch to the day.
So we just had an alternating schedule. We did eight classes the one day and then eight classes the next day, and then same thing for a PM class.
We have to do our country thirty-two times.
It was about twelve or so minutes in each classroom, and then they line up and they go to the next country.
Our special ed teachers, our ELL teachers, and all extra help, they're the ones that help the classes go to the next room. It's twelve minutes, so it's like, come in, get the passport, and then we start.
The kids have really gotten into it. I know I asked my kids the other day, it's like, okay, you know, what country was your favorite? And almost all of them said the USA. A lot of them liked Mexico, a lot of them liked India.
The rooms where there's either a song going on, Mexico, they did, I believe it was like the Mexican hat dance. So like, it's things like that that stick to them.
Miss Alvegir looked like an Italian chef.
Say ciao with daddy!
Today, Germany was a big hit because my kids got to visit Germany today.
Germany was the first country to build a gingerbread house.
The kids love gingerbread houses, so I was like, oh, this would be great to teach them something that came from Germany is something that we use here that they also enjoy making the gingerbread houses.
We did Bangladesh in here, so we learned all different kinds of things about Bangladesh. We talked about the Bengal tiger, which Bangladesh is home of the Bengal tiger. We listened to a song and watched a dance called Datang Datang Bole, and they got to try to reenact that dance.
My favorite country is Australia.
I read up about Australia, and we kind of talk about, you know, where is Australia?
And Australia is really far away.
And I said, can we drive there? And I was like, no way. I was like, can we fly there? And they're all like, yeah, we could fly there. And I asked them if we can take a boat there, and they're like, nope, we would sink.
Because kangaroos, and they're dangerous.
A lot of the places are representing where they came from, their culture, so for them to see their flag being represented here excites them because they're being represented, and it's something that they can also share with the rest of their class.
They'll be like, well, I've visited Bangladesh before, my family's from there. It's really cool to be able to have those kids who have heard of it and who have visited that country be able to share something about it.
The kids get to connect it back to their own life, they get to learn about different cultures, and they kind of just get to have something fun and different.
They're always in their own classrooms, so for them to be able to explore classrooms that they never get to see before, and they get excited about moving around the building. They were saying to me today, this is the best day ever. At the end of the year, when we asked them, what was your favorite thing about kindergarten? I'm pretty sure a lot of them are gonna say, oh, visiting the countries, the global fair.
The global fair was fun.
At this time, we want to thank you all for your support. Thank you, Eli, thank you, Saigon, and thank you, Annalise, for doing a fantastic job with our pledge. And thank you, Jason, for such an incredible video. We especially want to thank our K-Center team for your continued support. Thank you all.
I do want to add one thing. Mark told me, as a first-year principal, we have to give gifts. So this, we did provide some gifts for you later. Okay? No more, no gifts next year. Thank you.
You think so, huh? That was great. Thank you so much for that. I love the idea of introducing the concept of travel and passports to kindergarten kids. I think it's just something that just kind of plants the seed in there, and I think, I think that's great that we're doing that in this community. The third item on the work session agenda is the recognition of twenty-five years of service by Assistant Superintendent of Recruitment, Retention, and Culture, Dr. John Council.
Thank you so much, and good evening, members of the board, President Fields, Vice President Williams, Dr. McGary, and members of the community. Once again, this evening, we have the honor of recognizing two members of our Upper Darby family who have dedicated twenty-five years of their lives. Give them a hand. Twenty-five years of their lives of serving the students and families right here in our district. First, I want to acknowledge and recognize Ms. Jennifer Westrop. Please give Ms. Westrop a hand, please. Now Jennifer, also known as Jen, has served our students as the health and physical education teacher, as well as the department chair at Beverly Hills Middle School. Jen received her middle school education at Beverly Hills Middle School and graduated from Upper Darby High School. Her daughter, who was with her as, with her as well, Rosie, is currently a student at Beverly Hills Middle School. Jen was instrumental in integrating PBIS into Beverly Hills Middle School. She currently serves as an internal PBIS coach. Jen is also the Student Assistance Program, also known as SAP Coordinator. Jen credits, I had an opportunity to talk to her earlier today, and she, she just mentioned that she credits her twenty-five years of service to just simply giving back to her community where she lives. Please join me again in recognizing and applauding Ms. Jennifer Westrop's twenty-five years of service to the Upper Darby School District. Ms. Westrop, can you make your way to the front, please?
President Fields, Superintendent McGary, don't go too far, because this evening, we would also like to recognize Michelle Mooney. Please give Ms. Mooney a hand. Now, Michelle is celebrating an incredible twenty-five years of dedicated service to our district as a reading specialist at Primus Elementary School, which she considers her dream job. Michelle started her career as a student teacher at Bywood Elementary School, then served as a substitute teacher at Bywood, Westbrook Park, and Primus Elementary School before joining the Primus family as a first-grade teacher. Michelle dedicate is described, now this is, this is touching, she is described by her colleagues as a positive, vibrant presence whose love of reading and passion for books are infectious. Michelle credits her twenty-five years of service in my conversation with her to the children, families, and staff at Primus Elementary School. She also pointed out that she is now teaching the children of her former students. Michelle, thank you for your past twenty-five years of service, and we look forward to many more ahead. Please join me again in congratulating Michelle Mooney on this incredible accomplishment. Again, give them both another round of applause. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Council, and thank you both for your dedication to the district. Really appreciate it. So I'm doing both names, right? I think so. The final item on the work session agenda is School Board Recognition Month with Representative Gina H. Curry, Representative Heather Boyd, who's middle initial, I don't know, and UDEA President Linda Fox. Oh, I meant to preface that with the two best state representatives in the state of Pennsylvania, Heather Boyd and Gina Curry, and the best UDE president, Linda Fox.
As a former school board director, it is important for people to know that this, these folks up here, that this job is not easy. And so I just wanted to say thank you for all that you continue to do, and for the new members, welcome. But I also wanted to say that when I think about school, a school board director, I think of someone who's committed, dedicated, a partner, and is responsible. You have a lot of accountability to do the right thing for your district, our district, as parents, as community leaders, as, as friends to so many who you are leading. Your role is huge. You're here to support such a huge district, and we are so honored to have you. So from the, from my office, and I'm gonna let Rep. Boyd talk too, from my office, I just want to say thank you, because so often we have constituents that are calling and interacting with our office about the school district, and we know what, how we can come back to each of you to let you know what is going on in the community that you might not be aware of. So thank you very much. And from my office, I just want you to know, we've given you a certificate of recognition that Ms. Buford is passing out to you, beautiful flowers, and lunch on us.
I obviously am just so incredibly thankful for the work that all of you do. As a former school board director myself, you do have two former school board directors as state representatives here. We want to be the best advocates that we can be for the Upper Darby School District. Rep. Curry and I have our children here in this district. We're incredibly proud to be representatives of this district when we're fighting in Harrisburg for equity. That is something that has long been unavailable to us. So I just want to thank all of you for the work you do. I know you do it unpaid. You love democracy, you put your name on a ballot, and you ask folks to come to you with their problems, and that is a challenge that is real public service, and I'm just so grateful that you continue to do that every day. I did offer you as well, from my office, a small token of my appreciation for your work every day, and I hope that we can continue our partnership over the next however many years we're all here together. Thank you.
On behalf of the UDA, we would like to thank you for your service to your, our community. Your volunteerism is crucial to the operations of what the service that we provide to our students and our families. So thank you. We know that there are times where it's really difficult, super difficult, I should say, but you do it every day because you care and you're dedicated and you're committed. So I want to thank you from all nine hundred of us. We do have a gift for you. So I have some of my other board members, Donna Plowski, Nick Cooms, and Gina Applegate are here, and they have a present for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for being so generous. And thanks to the reps who mentioned, but the former board members, right? And it's great to have, it's great to have people that know what we're working with in places where they can advocate for us. So I really do appreciate the time that you guys put in and the work that you put in as well. I think that's all we have for the presentations. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, would you please outline the public participation procedures?
Yes, you can participate this evening in a couple of ways. Obviously, those who are in person tonight, as we begin the meeting, there will be reports, and during those reports, the board will have a conversation, then open up the public comment for each report. Tonight is a comment-only meeting, so you can come to the microphone, provide a comment on a specific report. The comments are up to three minutes. The board will take those comments into consideration before moving forward. Those who are in person, and obviously tonight is definitely rewarding you, if you came out in the rain, you will have an opportunity to comment and speak first. Those who signed up for general comment and did not want to comment on a specific report would have had to have done so in person tonight by signing up prior to seven-thirty. Those who are participating virtually would go second. You can participate virtually by sending in either an email to boardmeetingcomments@uprdarbsd.org or by phoning it in at six one zero seven eight nine seven two zero zero, extension two thousand. Again, same for virtual as it is in person, please provide your name, address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on. Again, comment only, and the board will take that comment into question at the appropriate time before we move forward with any kind of reports, before they take action. All comments do become part of the record. The Board President Fields, I'm happy to provide that update as we go forward tonight if we need to.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, from twelve-twenty-eight PM until one forty PM for the legal matters, as well as this evening, from six PM to seven-thirty PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act ninety-three of nineteen ninety-eight. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Ms. Brittany Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Murphy Marisi. Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Des Newiers.
Present.
Ms. Glenn.
Present.
Ms. Deborah Williams.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Ms. Murphy Marisi and Ms. Mitchell are excused. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
I'll need a second. Okay. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
Okay. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain. Motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting, and the reorganization meeting of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. I will read this, since Director Marisi is not available. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. We now come to the student representative report. We will now have the report of the student representatives, Jade McCons and Fernando Santos.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Board President Fields, members of the board, Dr. McGary, and community members. For our January report, Jade and I visited the kindergarten center and Aronamic Elementary School. Earlier in December, I met with the principal of the kindergarten center, Mrs. Delosi, and the assistant principal, Mr. Galligan. During our meeting, we discussed the changes that have taken place at the kindergarten center. Mrs. Delosi informed me that students now go directly into their classrooms to have breakfast or lunch, depending on their scheduled time of arrival. However, during this time, ELL teachers, classroom teachers, and reading specialists can also work with the specific students who may need additional help. The kindergarten center also received new doors, and former cubicles were turned into instructional spaces to give the students more classroom space for their instructional activities and lessons. So now, all spaces within the school are being used to teach. The kindergarten center, the kindergarten center, excuse me, also received a fresh coat of paint during the summer, as well as a newly refurbished jungle gym. The kindergarten center participated in many fun events, including a water eye social at the beginning of the year and a parent orientation night that allowed parents and teachers to introduce themselves and familiar, familiarize themselves with their children's curriculum. Mrs. Delosi also informed me that back-to-school night was combined with ELL night and was an amazing, and was an amazing event with a large number of parents attending. The kindergarten center also had a Chuck E. Cheese fundraiser sponsored by the Home and School Association. The funds will be used for a school dance. During the week before winter break, students celebrated different cultures and holidays by participating in activities that would show that many different holidays several students celebrate. Lastly, the kindergarten center has a literacy event, a bingo parent night, and a student of the month assembly to reward students for their excellence and royal behavior. Now that they're back from break, the students will be working on their winter assessments, which focus on every student's reading needs and level.
After winter break, I had the pleasure of interviewing Mr. Rehack and Ms. Simpson at Aronamic Elementary School. The Upper Darby School District is experiencing a historic, excuse me, historic moment because it has been decades since the last substantial expansion. The school year is flying by, but all are great at Aronamic Elementary School. The current school was once the administrative building, but Aronamic just joined Sanco Elementary School to establish one large school to provide all the kids with a place to learn and grow locally. Students, faculty, and administration all feel like family at this stage, and the amount of community that has already been developed is incredible. The school has been under official construction for some time and is roughly ninety percent complete, and everyone in Aronamic is eagerly waiting the final ten percent. So far, they gained a new playground, expanded from a school of two hundred fifty to five hundred plus students, and are expecting their new gymnasium, a new stage for concerts, and moving up ceremonies, a new library, and a new art room. Aronamic has had an exciting winter. They recently held their winter concert at Juxell Hill Middle School. There was an Aronamics annual reindeer romp, a winter-themed turkey chop for those unfamiliar with it, a neighborhood winter card delivery where the third, fourth, and fifth grades were given a map and walked the streets with their teachers, spreading holiday and winter joy to the community, and a holiday sing-along. The school plans for its snowball dance at the end of January and digging up the nineteen-eighty-eight Times capsule with past teachers and alums, the Flyers Assembly, and Family Heritage Night. Because the school is so diverse, it is a night for everyone to not only express their culture, but also share and have others participate to break down boundaries and build a new level of understanding. After the interview, I had a tour of the school, and it looked fantastic. So far, the colors and design are amazing. I even joked about enrolling there instead of college next year because everything looks so good. I'm still thinking about the mall-style bathrooms with the sinks visible from the hallway outside. Overall, it was wonderful to watch kids engaging with Mr. Rehack and Ms. Simpson in the classrooms. They've come a long way in such a short time, and even though the school is still ongoing, Aronamic already looks incredible. It's a crucial year because it's the first, and that's when all the expectations and foundations are laid. They've worked hard to make sure that two different schools feel like one sizable welcoming community, and the teachers and students have done an excellent job. And like Mr. Rehack and Ms. Simpson said, it's a great time to be an Aronamic royal. This concludes our report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both, and I am really personally thrilled to hear that about Aronamic, so thank you for that. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Daniel McGary.
Thank you, Board President Fields. Before I begin, I do want to acknowledge Ms. Delosi, Ms. Gilton, I thank you very much for your work at the kindergarten center, but also to Ms. Simpson, if you want to say hello to everybody that's here, Mr. Rehack. I think that work in opening a new school year, literally down to the last minute, Josh is the principal of the school in the back, I don't think the folks can see you. We had a merger, we merged Sanco and Aronamic Elementary School this year into Dr. Manfree to Josh, Ms. Simpson, excellent job, and to the staff, the teachers, the teachers' union coming together to make that happen. I think the kids captured it well. It is very, you know, I think capturing as a historical moment is absolutely true, so great job presenting that. And to the principals here, I just want to make sure that you're acknowledged for what you've done to make that happen, and to Greg, thank you as well. Great, great job. Happy New Year, I guess, is the first thing I want to say to everybody. We haven't had that said yet here in this meeting, but Happy New Year to everybody that's here. It's our first meeting back from the break, and I would like to start off my comments, those who are in the audience are probably saying, why are we giving out gifts and celebrating? It would be nice at every board meeting, we're about getting gifts and receiving gifts as school board members. As a superintendent, I certainly don't see many around my area, so I'm wondering what's going on. But January is School Board Recognition, School Board Appreciation Month, and I just want to take a moment also to thank the school board of directing, directors for what they do. And this time of the year, I like to pass out some interesting facts. There are forty-five hundred, forty-five hundred school board of directors in the state of Pennsylvania who represent over five hundred school districts, right? That's pretty, pretty remarkable, pretty, pretty staggering statistics. In Pennsylvania, board of school directors are elected volunteers. We just held our first retreat this past Saturday, and I could tell you that they were really riveted on their seats. It was such an exciting retreat for them to go through, and I'm sure the new board members will tell you, and especially those who've been here for a few years now, that there's a tremendous amount of time. I know you heard from Representative Curry and Representative Boyd, who were both on this board, there's a tremendous amount of time and effort and energy, hours of time prepping for board meetings, learning new material, and I can't tell you, and I tell, I say this every year at this time, how often I'm stopped by a community member or I'm coaching or wherever I am about school, like, you know, those board members. those board members, they make so much money. And I say, I say to people in the public, you know, they don't get paid anything. And then the next comment that comes out of their mouth is, why would anybody do that? And so I just want to say to the school board and to the public, you know, thank you. I think our School Board of Directors and the people that get involved in the schools know why they do it. Here are just some examples of what, you know, our Board of School Directors have pulled off. These are just some big, high-level things. We have new and improved school facilities. You heard about the Aronomic expansion and renovation, and there's more to come. We have new athletic complexes at our secondary schools, not to mention the athletic fields, but new tennis courts at the high school, new playgrounds at all of our elementary schools. They're committed to the arts by adding and improving to the auditorium spaces. The Upper Darby High School's being renovated, Beverly Hills Middle School's being renovated, Drexel Hill Middle School's being renovated. They've committed to the arts by adding supervisors and instructional coaches to the arts in the Upper Darby School District. We're dedicated to school safety and security, improvements like keyless entry, crisis-go applications, emergency response plans, cameras in and outside of the schools for dedicated security and security staff, not only the hardscaping-type things, but people, human elements have been added to the school district. We also have new contracts, labor contracts, for all of our unions here in the school district, which is, in two thousand and twenty-three, is no easy feat to have pulled off. And I thank our unions and our school board for making that happen. And there are countless, countless clubs and after-school opportunities and activities, and that's why I think this crowd is so crowded tonight, because we're going to celebrate what the Board of School Directors in this community provides those opportunities and how much our kids capitalize on those opportunities. So again, these are just a few of the larger improvements our Board of School Directors have asked of this administration. And the level of volunteerism for a member of a school board is considerable. And think about this, there are at least two monthly meetings, as I said, that require hours of preparation and training and reading of materials before they make any decisions. And our Upper Darby School Board of Directors has never wavered in their why. They are focused on providing the best for the families who trust us with their children. And they're doing this in a school district that is underfunded by close to twenty million dollars a year. And so I want to thank you for your continued advocacy for public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I also know that UDA provided a wonderful dinner this evening to the Board of School Directors. I think some went for seconds with that meal tonight. I know that also they provided a gift, and I know Udassa also, the administrator, Act Ninety-three, has a token of appreciation and gifts that they're going to be handing out to you as well. And we have certificates from Cabinet that we'd like to say thank you for your years of service. And for the new board members, thank you for signing on for this. Don't quit after tonight, because you may not get any other gifts after this. So as those things are going out, I, Board President Fields, and members of the community administration, students and staff, and also thank you again to the kindergarten center for what you've done and for showing how much we do build an inclusive community here. Jimmy, thank you so much for volunteering your photography. I guess I want to call it a booth, even though it wasn't a booth. That's pretty cool and pretty generous of you to do that with your time. Couple things I want to talk about tonight. I want to talk about our budget reminder and our timeline. What we really do here in these board meetings is make decisions about policy and budgeting and tax increases or no tax increases. And the board actually passed a resolution in December to adopt an accelerated budget opt-out. As a result, the district administration will not be presenting a preliminary budget because the board has already decided to keep any potential tax increase below the adjusted index. As a significantly underfunded school district, we are forced to balance our budget without clear knowledge of state funding, which ultimately leaves the administration and the board having to make difficult decisions. The district administration will be providing information on the budget over the next several months prior to the board taking action on adopting a final budget. I wanted to remind the board and the public that we will be asking for the adoption of a preliminary budget, or preliminary final budget, I'm sorry, on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the anticipated final budget for approval on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. At this time, we are working through staffing and facilities needs, and we will share this information with the board and the public. There will be committee meetings and conversations prior to May and prior to June's adoption. I'd just like to remind everybody at this period of time, we are in budget season mode as a school district, and we just recently had the state budget passed, you know, not too long ago. So it's difficult in the state of Pennsylvania, and I appreciate our state reps and Senator Kearney advocating for funding of our schools. It's not lost on us how hard that is, and we always appreciate that work. But that is the budget timeline. We have to adopt a budget by June thirtieth, and oftentimes, the state budget hasn't been approved before the school district is required to make its plans, budgetary plans for each year. Also want to take some time to make sure we recognize staff and student awards. Each month, we celebrate and recognize the accomplishments of our student athletes, both academically and athletically, and the positive social-emotional programs we continue to implement in all of our schools throughout the district. For the month of January, we again have many, many students and some staff to recognize. I do not give a report in December, so I recognize that some of these awards are a little bit older, and we're getting to them now, but nonetheless, we want to make sure that we do that. Right off the bat, we have an Aronomic school teacher, Kevin Key, Aronomic Elementary School, in recognition of being selected to the highly acclaimed Ron Clark Academy. Come on up, get a picture. We have a bunch of students we're going to call up, so if we can wait to applaud totally until we call up the unbelievable accomplishments of our PMA District Twelve ensemble. I know our music teachers are here, and our band director is here as well, and his assistant. Just want to make sure that we have twelve, we have to recognize at least thirteen students. Several of our students were recognized at this year's Pennsylvania, known as PMA, Music Educator Association's District Twelve competitions in band, chorus, and orchestra. The following students were selected to perform in the twenty-three-twenty-four PMEA District Twelve Band. Brihan Amadia, I don't know if Brihan is here or not, Benjamin Davis, Sarah Gentile, Stephen Gord, and Nate Epoch. You are here. Come on up. And then the following students, as we hand out these certificates, were selected to perform in the twenty-three-twenty-four PMA District Twelve Chorus. Mary Grace Klineott, Caleb Marker, I see Dad in the back, Josiah Marker, Cole McIntosh, and James Winnington, if you can come on up as well. And then the following students were selected to perform in the twenty-three-twenty-four PMA District Twelve Orchestra. Brahine Amadia, Emily Fishback, and Stephen Gard. I know we have some of the music teachers from the high school. If you could please come up, you are the true backbone of the hard work that goes into the talent of these kids, not just these students and their parents, but the teachers that are here with us. Please come on up and get in the pictures as well. Thank you. So we also have to recognize the talented academic aspects in our Philadelphia Young Playwrights. Just some background, since nineteen eighty-seven, the Philadelphia Young Playwrights has partnered with educators to bring the transformative power of playwriting into classrooms and community settings across the greater Philadelphia area. Really one of the key ways to demonstrate twenty-first century skills, creativity, communication, and collaboration. I know there's ChatGPT, and I know there's texting and everything else that's going on, but I still think writing and creativity is just the greatest form of expression. So I hope we don't ever lose sight of that as we, I guess, move into this greater world of artificial intelligence and technology. The winners of this year's festival were chosen by the Philadelphia Young Playwrights from over six hundred submissions, from students in thirty different schools. And you'll notice there are some similar names from similar families, both talented academically, in their core content areas, but also musically talented, which is just a compliment to those families. We appreciate you having your kids in our schools. But Allison Marker, if you want to come forward, I'll read this before we clap. I think it's important to give you a little bit of this title. Drexel Hill Middle School in recognition of earning second place for the piece titled "Ends," E-N-D-S, "With the Ocean Ties" in the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Monologue Festival of Philadelphia Young Playwrights. Congratulations, Allison. Come on up. Samaya Usman of Beverly Hills Middle School in recognition of third place for the piece titled "Friday the Thirteenth," ooh, in the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Monologue Festival of Philadelphia Young Playwrights. Ali Davis of Drexel Hill Middle School in recognition of earning first place for the piece titled "Lost and Found" in the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Playwriting Festival of Philadelphia Young Playwrights. Number four, Nee Noe of Beverly Hills Middle School in recognition of earning second place for the piece titled "What About the Past?" in the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Playwright Festival, Young Playwrights, not I'm thinking the Marker family has a lot going on, both academically and the arts, music, and writing. So Allison Marker of Drexel Middle School in the recognition of earning second place for the piece titled "Kindling Faya." I hope I said that properly, "Kindling Faya." Did I? Good job. All right. In the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Monologue Festival of the Young Playwrights, congratulations to you a second time. And then Wesley, yep. Wesley Friedman of Drexel Hill Middle School in recognition of earning second place for the piece titled "Bugging Me" in the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Monologue Festival of the Philadelphia Young Playwrights. So we're going to get a picture here. Not only do we just seem to excel, our kids and this community, and again, compliments to the teachers and the families that we have, we seem to have always excelled in the arts, in our writing, in our academics. We also exceed in the athletic field. Just want to give out congratulations to postseason award winners and Fall Central League Sports. Those who've been honored as All Central, we're All Dalco. Boys soccer. First up, we have Funse Donzo, Upper Darby High School for being selected to the Central League First Team Boys Soccer for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Not sure if we're made to make it out tonight. Alfonso Murphy of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the Central League Second Team Boys Soccer. Congratulations. Zook Shakir, I don't know if Zook is here, Upper Darby High School for being selected as an honorable mention for the Central League Boys Soccer for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Ming Kong Noon, Upper Darby High School for being selected as an honorable mention for the Central League Boys Soccer for the twenty-three-twenty-four year. Not sure if they will be able to make it out. Don't blame them for the weather. We'll make sure they get their certificates. But also, hold on, hold on. Behind the great soccer players must be a great what? Coach. So congratulations to Andrew Flood, teacher at Upper Darby High School for being selected as the Coach of the Year for the twenty-three-twenty-four Central League Soccer. Girls soccer. And I recognize the first name because she seems to win an award every year, especially since she's been a freshman, but Aubrey Patterson, Upper Darby High School for being selected as Central League Second Team Girls for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Congratulations to Aubrey. I don't know if she made it out tonight. I don't see her. And Kyla Ward, Upper Darby High School for being selected as honorable mention for the Central League Girls Soccer for the twenty-three-twenty-four year. Congratulations to both those student athletes. I know they could make it out. We'll get their awards to them. Field hockey. Field hockey. Upper Darby High School Field Hockey Team has been selected for the Central League First Team Sportsmanship Award for the twenty-three-twenty-four year. So congratulations to the girls' field hockey team for the recognition of sportsmanship award. And then on that team, we have Casey McGee of Upper Darby High School for being selected as Central League Second Team Field Hockey. I don't know if Casey is... Olivia Lyons, Upper Darby High School for being selected as honorable mention for Central League Field Hockey. And Sue Nee Heller of Upper Darby High School for being selected as honorable mention to Central League Field Hockey for twenty-three-twenty-four. I don't think that they're here, but congratulations to them. Tennis. Upper Darby High School's tennis team was also selected for the Central League for the second team, for second team sportsmanship for the twenty-three-twenty-four year. So congratulations to the tennis team. And then Paige Stringer of Upper Darby High School for being selected as honorable mention for the Central League Tennis for twenty-three-twenty-four. So Paige, I don't know if you're here. Are you listening in? Volleyball. The Upper Darby High School volleyball team was selected first team for sportsmanship this year for twenty-three-twenty-four. And Ava Sisko for Upper Darby High School for volleyball was honorable mention All Central League. So Ava, congratulations. I don't think Ava is here. If you are, come forward now. Cross-country. Lori Lai Golombuski, Upper Darby High School for being selected as honorable mention for the Central League Cross-Country Team. Also, the girls' cross-country team was selected for Central League First Team Sportsmanship. That would have made former Board President Brown thrilled because his daughter is on the cross-country team. And the boys' cross-country team was also recognized for their sportsmanship and received honorable mention for cross-country sportsmanship. So congratulations to those award winners. And we held football off to last because there's people who think we only care about football in this community, but that's not, that's not true. But we do have some outstanding football players. I see the family and some students, athletes here with us. But seven student athletes from the football team, one of them being first, Jalen Johnson of Upper Darby High School for being selected as Central League First Team Offense for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. I don't see Jalen here, but congratulations to Jalen on that award. Jalen was also selected for Upper Darby High School First Team Football Defense. So Jalen was both offense and defense, first team All Central. Congratulations to him. Kamar Purlot of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the Central League First Team Football Defense for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. I know that he is here with us, so if you want to come on up to the front. Thomas Wetling, Upper Darby High School for being selected as Central League Second Team Football Offense for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Thomas, come on up. Zaire Birch Coon, Upper Darby High School for being selected Central League Second Team Football Defense for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. I don't think Zaire is here. Azim Spicer of Upper Darby High School for being selected as honorable mention, All Central League for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Don't see him. And Khalil McLaughlin, Upper Darby High School for being selected as the honorable mention for the Central League Football Team, twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Congratulations to all of them. I'm going to stay back here. You guys come here so I can stand and be taller, but I'll come up there and get a picture. So as you can see, there's a lot of work that goes into this school district, and we certainly couldn't do it without the success and help of our parents and our students. So all the students we recognize, I'm sorry for the delay in last month getting to this month, but the teachers, the parents, the students, you're the reason why we do what we do, and this board does what they do, the opportunities we provide and the community provides. But you make us look really good. And so I appreciate what you do, your commitment to this community, the parents, your commitment, your dedication. Our arts, music, athletic programs are stellar, and I think it's really wonderful that you are here tonight, even in this bad weather, just shows your dedication, the teachers' dedication, parents and students, great families that I've known for a long time. To the Board of School Directors, thank you for your dedication to this, to this community. It's a lot that goes into it every single day, but you can see the fruits of your efforts with the kids in these awards. So before I do end my report this evening, I want to know if it's okay if we can dismiss anybody who wants to get home, but especially our two student reps, who I'd like to try to get home safely tonight. Great job on your report. If we can excuse them, that would be great.
So moved.
All right. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
We will now have an update on the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Education and People's Services Committee meeting from Director War Savage, who will read a summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
Thank you very much, President Brown. We had two, goodness, we had two items on the agenda for that evening, one of which would have required board action, but we will get to that in a moment. First item was Keystone Exams, a winter administration window. It was informational. Dr. Christine Kelly presented the annual Keystone Exam Window Testing Requirements and Information for Parents and Guardians. This topic was informational. The second item on the agenda for that evening was a two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five District One Page Calendar, which in the end will require board action, but after my remarks, I'd like for Dr. McGary to put another dimension on that in a second. Dr. Christine Kelly reviewed the proposed District One Page Calendar for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. The first day of school and other important dates were presented to the school district community for review. This item... This item was for board action in tonight's meeting, but Dr. McGary, could you give the public a little bit more details on the conversations that have been happening over the calendar, please?
Yeah, first, I take some responsibility. I think I added to some confusion in the calendar process. So I think in some conversations, I know there's a resolution to approve a calendar for this evening, but I think it's probably best that we, you know, go back to a conversation in January. So there will be a report, a resolution in the instruction curriculum, and I think after having some conversations, both internally and with some board members, that maybe there's a need to look at that calendar again and make some adjustments. So just want to make sure after, because there was a lot of dialogue and conversation at that committee meeting. So when that item comes up, unless the board doesn't want to approve that calendar, that would be a moment to make sure that we get it right moving forward. And that's our goal, to make sure we have an appropriate calendar.
Thank you very much. And to add, there were no public comments for the evening, and that ends my summary.
Thank you, Director War Savage. We will now have an update on the December 19th, 2023 Finance and Operations Committee Meeting. I will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs. So there was just one item on the agenda. It was the 2023 Bond Issuance Update. This was informational. District Administration provided an update on the finalized 2023 bond issuance and the impact it would have on the district's capital plan. There were no public comments. Now, I will, the Instruction Curriculum Report, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. I was about to say President Brown. Sorry. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move as follows to send the calendar piece back through committee, but to approve the rest of the balance of the report and its, for the rest of it, in the fancy legal language I'm supposed to use.
So can I get a second?
Second.
Second, okay, plenty. Okay. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Not at this time.
All those in favor, please, I want to check with Kyle. We're good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say I oppose. All those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Thank you, Director War Savage. For the Personnel Report, I was gonna give it to Director Mitchell. She is unavailable. So the Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
All right. Okay. I just, in keeping with tradition, I want to note the retirements. Thank you to this month's retirees for your years of service and work, and also welcome any of the new hires that we have and professional appointments. We are happy to have you join our family here at the school district. All right. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Over to Director Disnoyers for the Policy Report, First Reading.
Thank you. There is no vote required on the policies appearing on the agenda this evening. They just have to appear on the agenda tonight. To give you a, to give everyone a brief summary of the updates occurring to these policies, there are changes to four policies for consideration for a first reading during this meeting. As a reminder, these policies will be presented at subsequent committee meeting and then must undergo a second reading at a future board meeting prior to taking effect. The four policies undergoing a first reading at this evening's meeting are 001 Name and Classification, 103 Discrimination or Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students, 104 Discrimination or Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff, and number 819 Suicide Awareness, Prevention, and Response. I will provide a brief summary of the changes. The full policies with changes indicated are posted to Board Docs. Policy 001 Name and Classification, the district's official address is being updated due to administration moving to this building. Policy 103 and Policy 104, the title of the district's Title IX Officer is changing from Supervisor of Human Resources to Supervisor of Recruitment, Retention, and Culture. In addition, the district's official address is being updated due to administration moving to this building. Policy 819 Suicide Awareness, Prevention, and Response. These changes, these updates were initiated by PSBA, and it's to try to clarify the policy in relation to the correlation between threat assessment teams and crisis response or intervention teams when addressing suicide prevention and response. So the policy was also updated to reflect current terminology and resources. And along with that, there's an administrative regulation, 819 AR0 Suicide Crisis Intervention and Response Guidelines, that's also being updated. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Disnoyers. There is no second reading this month. So Supplies Report, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Not at this time.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. There is no Transportation Report. Director Deborah Williams, could you read the Facilities Reports and the Use Facilities Reports?
Yes. The Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. There is no Food Services Report. Vice President Williams, the Finance and Budget Report Approval.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Not at this time.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Collateral Assignment Reports. Delaware County Community College is looking for applicants to its board. It's, there's another seat available on the Board of Trustees. So if serving on a board, it's very similar to this board, but just at the community college, please go to the community college website and take a look and maybe submit an application. Director Mitchell would have the DCIU update. She is not available, so no update here. I am gonna go start with Director War Savage for Legislative Council, and you're gonna hand it over to Director Glenn.
Yes, there, the next legislative meeting will be tomorrow morning, quarter of eight, 7:45 in the morning, and your board will be proudly represented by newly minted Director
And Kimberly, I really appreciate you stepping up to do that. Menon Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Director Brittany Williams.
Yes, the next meeting will be February, it will be in February, which will be my first meeting attending, and it will be on February the 4th, I believe.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. And again, thank you for stepping up to do that work. Home and School, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. First, I want to thank everyone for their flexibility in that particular district-wide home and school meeting. I do know that there were some priority items that had come up during the day, and so the meeting actually had to be pushed back not once, but twice, but I'm told that there was actually better attendance this time around as opposed to times prior. So I'd like to take the temperature in a future meeting to see if perhaps we can get even more attendees on behalf of the home and school if we move that meeting around. But just to note, I do know Dr. McGary would probably like to add a few words, but I gave the district-wide home and school a couple of thinking questions, just to give us, give me feedback to share with the board so we can find out how we can best support them. And I broke it into three parts, one of which is already answered. My first thinking question was, can these meetings also include an opportunity for each Home and School Association to advise of their upcoming events? Thankfully, your district website, upperwSD.org, does have that information. We do have a district-wide calendar for all home and school events, and we do encourage everyone to make use of that website and look for that relevant information. The second thinking question, and these other two that I'm about to mention, we're gonna get more information on later. The first one was, can we begin to brainstorm on district-wide Home and School Association specific events to help boost participation at each separate home and school organization? And also, is there a way that we can get some kind of numbers on how much it does or has cost each Home and School Association to produce their events in recent memory? And it could help for budget discussions or fundraising people may want to do. Dr. McGary, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, as luck would have it, or bad luck would have it, or bad planning on my behalf, we had policy meeting Monday afternoon, and then from policy, we rolled into an excellent parent information night that was attended by, you know, Ms. Buford, Dr. Kelly, Mr. Marshlack, Dr. Manfree, Mrs. Simone, and Mrs. Buford on, with Iran McGinn on a second phase of, you know, helping parents, parent workshop, very well attended. They would stay on for hours, I think, and listen to Iran on that work. There's a third meeting coming up, and I thank the board for supporting that. That went to, we had to jump off to then jump, that went, started at like six, and, you know, we had to jump off of that to get to the district home and school meeting. So I appreciate the principals, you know, good turnout with the principals, central office team. Again, Ms. Kelly, Dr. Kelly, Dr. Manfree, Ms. Simone, Ms. Buford, joined us at the district home and school meeting with the administrators. President Fields joined us, jumped on the meeting, was a really good conversation, really had a good talk about your questions, are gonna get back to that information, shared a potential fundraiser. Ms. Mitchell has asked, and we've been meeting with some special education parents, especially into autistic support program, and a mom most recently asked about a fundraiser, a dodgeball fundraiser, as a district-wide event with kids, it's pretty cool, and she wants to organize that. So I shared that as an example. I think what Damian you want to have happen is sharing and partnering together district-wide. So they appreciated those questions, they will get back to us on that information. I brought them up to speed on where we are with our bond issuance, the preliminary opt-out of the, of the opt-out resolution, talked to them about the school calendar as far as the 180 days, 900, 990 hours, explained to them what that looks like and that that was past. I think that was a good conversation that we had there. And then again, there was a question from the home and school about Wednesday folders, and we encouraged them to keep asking us questions so we can address them that night. It was a good conversation overall. So you were missed, but you were there, and we referenced your questions and made sure that they knew that you gave them homework to do. So I appreciate it.
You were immersed. You were missed. They saw me and they were like, no, that's not Damian. So I could feel the love. Thank you, Director War Savage. Everybody, this little report is always very informative, and I think it's great that you participate in it. PSBA Representatives, Director Deborah Williams.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. There's some board leadership workshops coming up for PSBA. So that's for current board leadership and also for anyone that's interested in leadership in the future. So there's some virtual ones on January 23rd and February 15th, and then also some in-person sessions on Saturday, March 8th and Saturday, March 16th, if you can't make the ones on Tuesday and Thursday. Also, January 18th is New School Director Monthly Exchange. They have those meetings monthly, and this one is focusing on leading responsibly. So if you're interested in that, you can check that out on January 18th. And finally, I just wanted to speak about a resource they have, and it's a community resource, and it's called School Boards 101. So that resource can be found for the community at greatpaschools.com, and it just defines the board's role, authority, and responsibility. So again, greatpaschools.com for the community if you're interested in that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Policy Liaisons, Director Disnoyers.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you have communication, Director Glenn?
There's nothing at this time.
At this time? Okay, thank you. And then, no report for the Upper W Arts and Education Foundation. Moving on to old business, is there any old business from board members? Go ahead, Director War Savage.
Just real quick, the kindergarten center was kind enough to invite me to actually see their round the world Polar Express thing a couple of weeks ago. I have my own passport that was, photo was taken, and I was whisked around to each of the classrooms, and it was so exciting, not only to see all the kids get so involved as we saw, but also to see something like the Clear Touch technology being properly utilized in all the classrooms. And we definitely appreciate the vision of the administration in putting that technology in our classrooms, and of course, most, but certainly not least, the investment of the taxpayers for making that even possible.
Thank you, Director War Savage. Is there any new business from board members? Go ahead.
So I just wanted to express my sincere thanks to administration, to our representatives Curry and Boyd tonight, to our kindergarten center, and to our unions for our wonderful gifts for Board Appreciation Month. It is really appreciated, definitely noticed. I might need help till my car taking out all my gifts tonight. So I just, I just really wanted to express my sincere gratitude for that tonight. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice President Williams. Any other new business? Okay. All right, board member resignation. So at this time, the board would like to announce the acceptance of Mr. Edward Brown's resignation from the board. He's got something else to do. I don't know what it is. So effective January 1st, 2024, in accordance with local board procedures, 004 Bog One, filling a board vacancy, the board authorizes administration to advertise the vacancy, establish timelines, seek resumes of applicants, and advertise the deadline for submission of applications. The district will accept resumes up to 12:00 PM on January 19th, 2024, and will conduct the interview process at 5:00 PM on January 23rd, 2024. There is no vote there. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper W School District residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phone comments. We would ask you to come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit, in accordance with Policy 903. The time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. My sign-in sheet is blank. So there's no in-person comments. Are there any online virtual comments?
No, there are not.
Okay, so, public comments are closed. What's, who has, is there? Nope, I already said they're closed. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.